It's 4:01 PM. Today is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Luann Hook.
Red One B.
Jennifer Gavila.
Anne Lepin.
Erin Nelson, City and Town Manager.
So the first thing is the approval of the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2024. Has everyone received them? Are there changes, modifications, comments?
I have one. Yeah, it's number five. We just need to remove the few other projects that is appearing. The down payment was under different.
I think it was mentioned. I believe that.
Well, if it was mentioned, I said that we couldn't do it. Because I would have. We can't do that one with this group because it's under red light.
Okay, so I understand. Since it was mentioned, that wasn't me that's going to happen. But it was mentioned at what.
No, it wasn't in the meeting. But it was on my end of the meeting. But then I moved it. Anyway, this is where everybody's clear about the copy on this.
So the.
I would like to be able to prove that.
It's going to get a little bit of time for me to remember. I've got new people that I have to give initials to when they're doing things. Any further discussion? Luann made the motion for it, seconded it. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Erin? And do we have anyone on public comment?
We'll be honest, Anne, setting up. I could not put the notice up to maybe just announce it if anyone wants to make a public comment at this time. And I will get better on that.
No, that's okay. We're, it was a hard adjustment for me for four o'clock today. So I think we've got some, some adjustments. Public comment.
We haven't been in person. We've all been over screen and everyone else. So we've just got a couple.
So if anyone wishes to make a public comment, you'll have a three-minute time limit to make it. And if you exceed that time limit, the meeting controller will mute you. Because we're getting, making some adjustments with two new council members and the time of the day that we're meeting. We didn't have this posted previously, so today's kind of a freebie. If you want to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Signal Erin and she'll call, she'll let me know.
Not seeing anyone online at this point in time.
Then what I'm going to do is close off public comment. I think if somebody were to have a burning public comment in the next minute or two, just let me know and we'll take it. Now, what I have is the introduction of Elaine Gisler. But in the interest of moving along the request for local consent for on-premise banquet liquor license at number six underneath business, I did talk with both Elaine and Dallin about moving Dallin up. And I don't know if Dallin is on or not.
He's on.
Okay, so what we'll do is if Dallin, he, he said he was going to try to be here in person, but if not, he'd jump in online. So he could be delayed. And then I'll just introduce Elaine Gisler from San Juan Economic Development. And if you want to come up, Elaine, and actually, maybe would you feel more comfortable with a chair? Or do you want to stand?
It doesn't matter. This is on, like, right here?
Sure. And I'm just going to put this microphone over here because we're doing an audio, so.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here. Appreciate it. It's always great to come down to Bluff. I never say no. I love coming down, a reason to come down. Couple of things. I hear they talked quickly about the housing. Oh, here's Dallin. Do you want to meet with him?
Do you mind? And then we won't have to have.
No, I don't mind at all.
All right, Dallin, we're going to switch out and let Elaine sit back and and then. If everyone's okay, we'll drop down to item six, which is the request by Bluff dwellings for local consent for on-premise banquet liquor license. So if I could have you get close enough to that microphone because we're doing kind of a dual system here.
That's right. At virtual.
Yeah.
So I shared, what we're looking for is an on-premise banquet license for selling any alcohol. But like, we could set up bars at only private events. So if we have a group that stayed at the hotel and they want to do a dinner, we'd be able to set up bars. It also allows us to do wine and champagne as room service for guests that are staying at the hotel, which is another thing we were really trying to get, so. This is a banquet that's got all the different liquor licenses in it. If you share it with Anne, maybe you guys will want to copy that or you guys saw it.
I could take a copy of it and make it for anyone who wants it. But thank, thank you, that's helpful.
You guys actually gave us permission back in 2019. And I just got way behind with COVID and everything. We finally just submitted it with everything. And this is the last thing we need to be gift for it, so.
So does anyone on the council have questions about their consent? We did approve it last in 2019.
I think that we all, all of them. That whole, we can't work this stuff. And you know what's allowed and what's not allowed. But we, once we're following up.
Sorry, I can't hear, I can't hear you guys either, so. But yeah, it's, I appreciate like the sentiments. I have any questions?
So I think it's a really good step for you to take because, you know, as you noted in your email, people being told to go to Monticello to buy a bottle is just not doable for most folks who are here as tourists. So hopefully that'll boost your business and boost the sales tax and boost our revenue.
And like honeymoon, we'll be able to put a bottle of champagne in the room. Hold it back on sales dress, so.
I will see if there are any other questions. And then is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve local consent for on-premises banquet liquor license for Bluff dwellings.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Normally what I try to do is fill it out here, but I'll drop it off tomorrow morning at the desk. Is that okay?
Yep, that sounds great.
Perfect. Thank you and thanks a lot, Dallin. All right, thank you. All right, Elaine.
All right. So we have a lot. Our department has so many things going on. And, but it's exciting. We're working on a housing assessment for the very first time ever for Sandlot County. So we put out an RFP. And we selected Points Consulting is the company that's from Idaho. And they are conducting the assessment. And hopefully it will be done by the end of April. And they're, they're really traveling, they're going to be traveling all through the county. We've got public meetings in Monticello, Blanding, LaSalle, Bluff, and we're at Monument Valley. We've got OJ2 that's going to be participating. We're trying to get the other chapters. But we're going to make an assessment of all the housing stock we have in the county and then look at what our needs are as we go forward when they start to project out what they see. So they're going to be looking at all of our planning and zoning throughout each area. They're, they're taking into consideration growth. Anything that, we need housing stock so bad because we can't bring businesses in here. We don't have the workforce people that's just no one to live. So this is really, hopefully going to be a game changer for San Juan County. And once the assessment is completed, then I hope to talk to legislators. I'm going to go up to Salt Lake and go to Capitol Hill and just work with everyone, just plus organizations to see what we can do to gain support for funding and gain support for development. You know, talk to developers. I've been here a little over two years and the developers, a lot of them are just not, right now, not interested. But I think once we have a formal assessment of the county, that, that's going to make a big difference. It'll be a formal report, something that we can actually take with us and, and have, you know, meaningful conversations. And then hopefully approach organizations that can help us with grant funding, just a multitude of things. I'm also going to look at the county, like what property does the county own? What properties do cities own? That we might be able to negotiate some kind of contract, contractual agreement long, long term so that we can get developers interested in, especially in Monticello and Blanding. Monticello to me is, is, is the key to sort of making, we, we need housing so bad in Monticello because we're sort of a bedroom community to Moab and Cortez and, you know, those locations. So we'll see what comes out of it. It'll be interesting, an interesting process. And in addition to that, we are, oh, so the public, public comment, we want everybody to come and express. Brian Points, who owns the company, he'll be here. And Maria Byler, his assistant, she'll be here as well. So we can get public comment. And we're, we're really hoping people show up. We've done flyers, we're doing Facebook posts. We're, I have a podcast that's going out. We're going to be on the radio and trying to run ads to just cover all our bases to make sure people understand that it's important for them to come. And we don't have people say, well, I didn't know, I, you know, I wasn't aware of it. We want the whole community to be aware of it. And we're actually going to canvass the, the indigenous community, even though we don't have direct responsibility for making the housing happen. But I think once we find what their needs are, that will necessitate a trip to Window Rock to sit down with their principals and say, look, these are our findings. We're trying to help all of San Juan County. And hopefully they'll, they'll be open to talking about what we can do for the indigenous community. The other exciting thing about it is that we, San Juan County applied, Marielle applied for a fellow and through the Economic Recovery Corps. And this is through the Economic Development Corporation with DC. And we were lucky, I, I can't even believe, we got a fellow. He's coming here for two and a half years. Walcott's San Juan County and Dine.
Did you have housing?
He's coming in his own fifth wheel. He's coming in a fifth wheel. He's actually coming with his family. He has a couple of kids and his wife and their dog. And I'm very excited. So when he comes, we'll bring him down. So, you know, you can all meet him. I'm really excited. He's been traveling around the country with his family. And he's from the Midwest and he'll be coming here probably end of February. So the, the commissioner signed with MOU. And he will be working on this housing assessment. That will be his task. So he'll work with Points Consulting while they're conducting the assessment. And then when Points leaves, he will be tasked with following through on developing relationships with organizations, you know, partnering with developers and really doing an outreach, which is something that I can't do because, or my office can't do. There were two of us. It just, we're spread so thin. So the fact that we will have him, they're, they're spending, I think it's $225,000 over the course of the two and a half years for us to have this fellow. So we are, we are thrilled to have this. He's, he's an independent contractor. So he'll come into the office and he'll be out and about, probably all you all who want to come down and have conversations with him. So his, his name is Mick Thornton and he will be here, I'm thinking, the end of February. So we're excited about being up. There were hundreds and hundreds of cities and organizations across the country that applied for a fellow. I never thought we'd be lucky enough to, you know, I'm like, well, this is a long shot, but we did it. So I'm excited about that. We're also going to be working on a blight, commercial blight assessment where we're going to go through the entire county to identify buildings, commercial spaces that are blighted. And then once, I, I just wrote the RFP up and hopefully get that approved by the commission so we can put that out there. But this will be to identify every commercial space throughout San Juan County that is blighted and not being used. So we can go back to the owners and say, how can we help you? What can we do? Is there anything that, to make these viable business, open these businesses so that it brings in revenue to each of the communities? We all have some business that's been sitting vacant for years that really could provide some great sales tax revenue to the community. So we're working on that. Soon as that's approved through the commission, I'll let you know. But that'll, so that'll be a blight assessment, which I think will really help to identify specifically what the bill, you know, what the spaces are, whether it's vacant land or a building and who owns it and what are the particulars. So we've never done that before, so we're working on that. And I think we're going to be updating also the, on 2022 sales tax because our, the 2021 sales tax leakage report that Science Bank did for us, they estimated that San Juan County loses about $94 million. It's 93 something, but $94 million of sales tax revenue throughout the county because we don't have car dealerships, we don't have, we lack general merchandise stores, food services and, you know, drinking establishments, building materials, garden equipment, clothing and clothing accessory stores, furniture and home furnishing stores, and electronics and appliance stores. So those are the biggest misses on the NICS code. So they're going back out to identify what the sales tax leakage is, if it's the same, less, more. And then based on that, we'll also be able to go out and start looking at possible businesses that, that we can talk to that sort of entice them maybe to come into San Juan County and help, help our, our residents. Because if we can bring some of that sales tax in, back into the county, that's really going to make a difference. The other thing that we're looking and waiting to get answers on is Goldings is going to be sold. It's being sold back to the Navajo Nation. So it looks as though we may not be able to collect transient room tax. We're still waiting to hear from the Tax Commission and see how that works out. If that is true and we cannot collect transient room tax, we'll lose about 23% of our, of our TRT, our transient room tax collections for the county, which is going to be a huge hit because about 55% of that goes into the general fund to offset quite a bit, you know, when it comes to landfill or roads. So that's going to be a huge deficit for us. And I, I've been on the phone with the Tax Commission. I've got emails out there where they're trying to determine the sales. I don't think we'll be final till the end of February. But if we cannot collect transient room tax or sales tax, it's, it's going to be devastating. So, so we definitely need to figure out ways that we can bring more lodge. I know we need more lodging in Monticello. We don't have enough lodging properties open. The other thing is we're, we've signed a contract with Air DNA that is going to be able to identify all of the overnight rentals that exist throughout San Juan County. And we'll be able to look at what an occupancy rate is because right now we can't get occupancy rates since 99% of our lodging is independent. We have no idea what the average rate is or what the occupancy is. And if we want to bring development into San Juan County, we need to have some of that information. So Air DNA is going to be able to identify everything that's out there, occupancy rate is and what the average daily rate is. So that we should have up and running in about a month. So I think that's it for me. We're building the Mud Springs Trail in Spanish Valley for San Juan County. We're going through the NEPA process and that'll be great for San Juan because we, we don't have a high school mountain biking team. And if we have this course, we'll be able to go out and establish a high school mountain biking team and find sponsors from the businesses. And I think I'm looking forward to that because it will be an official NICA trail. And it will be three, it's going to take three phases over probably four or five years. But the first phase is going to be about 39 miles. But it's also, should include class one e-bikes. And it also will be adaptive, which we have nothing like that. And neither does Grand, Grand County. So they don't have class one e-bikes. So that trail in Spanish Valley and San Juan County is really going to set the tone for how we start moving through the county, connecting trails and really focusing on outdoor recreation. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Yes. Hey, Lou, Lou, just so that they can hear at that end.
Okay. Try my best. I just, my question is about Goldings. So if the Navajo Nation, the Navajo Nation is obviously separate.
Right.
But if, if the Navajo Nation owns something in Monticello, they don't have to pay taxes?
Not the tran, not the transient. We don't have anything like that. That's why the state is sort of in a quandary right now to figure this all out because we don't have anything that is currently where they're paying transient room tax. So they're trying to, all of the details, legal details have to be worked out. But they're a sovereign nation, so I'm not, I'm not sure what, you know, what, how that will work with the state. And I've asked the state, well, what do you do like in other areas of the state where you might have indigenous, you know, in ownership? And they, they really don't have, they have like gas stations. They, they weren't real clear on lodging, so we're kind of waiting.
Well, and I, and I understand if it's on the reservation.
Yeah.
Like the view there.
Right.
Reservation, but this is private property.
Well, they bought the property and the business, so they bought both.
But they, but they still are absorbing it with the reservation.
But it is, it, it was an island in the reservation. Goldings was a private island inside the Navajo Nation. So technically it is on the reservation. So it'll probably.
It's like, anything, like if this is your border or it's grounded, you're still private property.
I don't, I don't know. I think the attorneys and illegally, they have to figure out whether or not it will stay that way or, or not. So we have no, all I know is that if we lose 23, if there's a potential to lose 23% of our total transient room tax on an annual basis, it's going to be a huge loss for San Juan County. So we just have to wait and see. I know, I, I, every day I'm like.
Well, it's an interesting.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we could co, I don't, this is my thought. I don't know how the state could collect it if it goes back to the sovereign nation. I mean, I don't know. And it is part of the reservation. I, I don't know how they could collect transient room tax, but then I'm.
It was an island in the reservation.
It was, yes.
So did they absorb it back into?
They, I think they're, that's what's happening right now. So they, they approved, they approved the sale or they approved to buy it. But I'm not sure how legally what will happen. But it would seem to me that they would want to bring it into their, you know, the rest of their area, that they wouldn't be, it would be included into that.
For the, the housing assessment, what was the timeline on that?
Um, let's see, the end of this month or, uh, public meetings are going to occur throughout the county. And then we're hoping by the end of April, beginning of May to have the assessment completed. Yeah, so we're on a, on a really tight timeline and we're trying to pull it all together. But the company that, Points Consulting, this is what they do. So they're not, and we're working, we have, we have done every, we've been out in front of this whole thing. We've sent, I had invitations printed, mailed out because I just didn't want to send emails. I mean, this is really important. We get your voices and try to understand, you know, how people feel about housing and what their needs are, what the community's needs are. So they'll be going from location to location. So, yeah, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, no, it's really, everything you said is really exciting. But that's awesome. Cool, thank you very much.
So I just want to add that ours will be the 31st of January.
Yeah.
From 10 to noon. And what I really appreciate Elaine is that you made that happen because we were not initially one of the places that this would be taking, where the presentations would take place. And so Elaine has graciously squeezed us in, which means to the community, if you've got concerns about housing, we will send some blasts out, but please, please attend because this is really important to the community. And I know, I know we all on the council, at least daily, hear difficulties that people are having, the finding housing and worker housing. And, and so we want to show Elaine that it was worth her while to bring that to us.
I appreciate that. You know, being here for over two years, the, the housing has been, that has been my top priority. How do we help fix this housing situation? And how do we at least begin the process? And I think I'll say, oh, we don't, you know, we need housing. We don't have enough housing. We don't, but what is it that we actually need and what does each community need? And I think once we have this assessment done that will identify that rather than just saying it, we actually have, you know, something that will identify what our needs are. And then I, I would hope that if, as I say, take the show on the road up north, that I might enlist you to come with me.
Well, I'm always happy to. I'm happy to go places.
Because I am, I am determined that we are not going to be left behind by the state, that I am tired of us being in this, our little corner of the world down here. And we just get left behind on so many, in so many areas. And I think people, they need to, or legislators need to start listening to us, you know, what our needs are. So.
Well, the state, that was the one thing that we heard in the annual Cities and Towns Conference, like housing is the big priority. And I'm really excited to see what this firm finds for the rural area. Because yeah, the state, you know, it's all about.
Urban, the urban areas.
All the urban stuff and how you may, you know.
Right.
It's going to look so different down here.
Well, you know, if there's no reason why the rest of the state is flourishing, northwest, southwest, and here we sit. Here we sit. And I mean, to talk about transient room tax, losing 23% is going to be devastating. I mean, we are just hanging on. We need every penny that we can collect in sales tax and transient tax. And it, it shouldn't be that way for San Juan County. So something has to change for us. And I think if we have, you know, more housing to provide places for the kids, our children to live here, not export them out, bring, bring companies in, small companies that, that manufacturing companies or whatever they are, remote workers, but people who can live here and commute and really contribute back to the local economy. So that's what it's, you know, pretty much all about, so.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thanks a lot for making the trip.
Well, thank you. I, like I said, I love coming down here. Good to see you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay, right there. That's fine. Thank you. Elaine, I'm going to, are you leaving or staying?
I can stay.
I just had a couple other things that I, I just want to run by you. But if you leave, if you decide, okay. Okay, great. All right, then moving to unfinished business. Number one, report on the Design Review Committee meeting today. Janet, she was on the road to Salt Lake and so we. Janet, she was on the road to Salt Lake, and so we canceled that meeting. The next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 16th. Then we'll get that noticed. We're also switching to, okay, is it Microsoft Teams? So we'll be switching that and Erin.
Make sure it's loud and clear to everyone how to join and all the help stuff as to how to, how to join.
So Erin and I decided that when we really didn't have the executive director in on that meeting, it'd be best just to cancel it and start fresh with Microsoft Teams. So we'll send that out. And then the second part of that is the report, status of the equal justice government to government grant. Any news on that?
Uh, no, no good news on that. I think everyone knows about the background work that we're working on. I think the budget is the biggest thing that I'll try to get a draft prepared for you all because there will be some minor changes just in terms of what we learned about asbestos versus not. Maybe I can have that on the agenda next week for a proposed updated budget for the council to consider.
I've had a couple really good conversations with Janet Slomanchee, so we're moving forward. It's, I hope that next week she'll be able to be on the call. Number two, the status of the process of changing the bank account signatories at Zion's Bank. I have the letter now to drop off at Zion's that changes the signatories from Brant Murray to Britt Hornsby and Jennifer Davila. So I think you have the form, and if you don't, let us know. But you fill out the form, go up to Blanding to Zion and show them the ID. And I'll drop the letter off tomorrow afternoon, so they'll have that. And then you should be able to, to be on the account, which is important because once we take Brant off, we're really limited. Well, it's just me and Luanne who can sign checks at that point. So it's really important to get at least one of you on there. And the other piece that had popped in my head today was the same thing as with the credit card. We'll be canceling Brant's town credit card and we'll need one of you to have a credit card. And usually what we do is we just try to keep one, you know, a limited number of cards out there so that we are not replacing five or six if something happens. So when we retrieve Brant and cancel it, we're not retrievable, when we cancel it, either Jen or Britt, one of you will get a credit card. And I'm kind of leaning toward Jen just because she makes more trips to Blanding. A lot of the ordering though is done through Linda. And the reason Brant had it is because he was the treasurer, so it makes sense. Well, there you go. And so if you get a really good deal to Paris.
Okay.
Let me know. I'm going with you. So if we can get those couple of things done in the next week, that would be really good. Any questions on that?
Um, I'm going to be in Blanding tomorrow for Quinn's gymnastics class, but it'll be before you and I go, go ahead and drop stuff off.
Yeah, you should be able to fill out the form and everything.
I'll sub on it.
Maybe he can save you a trip.
Yeah, I can take.
No, if I weren't going up with AmeriCar. AmeriCar's orientation is tomorrow, so we're taking them up to Subway, a tour of Blanding, ANW bowling, and a comedian star, a movie theater. And then.
He can save you a spot, sounds like.
No, then we're going to Edge of the Cedars for, hopefully for a backroom tour with the, the team. But thank you. If something happens and they don't make it tonight, I'll let you know. So Elaine Gisler was very generous by doing my number three report on the San Juan County Commission meeting from January 2nd. I was just going to weigh in on the Goulding issue and the heads up that we need to be paying attention to that. So thank you, Elaine. It was a much more thorough report than I could have given, but when I heard that last week on the commission meeting, it was like, oh, I don't like this. Oh, and then something I like is duplicating. So we have number five as a duplicate, talking about the signatories on the account. We're going, so we'll just skip over that one.
Update committee meetings.
Were we? No, that's right.
Were we supposed to vote on that or?
On changing the signatories?
Yeah.
You probably should. So you want to, somebody want to make a motion so we can put it in the minutes? That's right. The auditor asked for the minutes last time. So does somebody want to make a motion to change the signatories and the credit card?
Motion to make the changes on the signatory and to get a credit card to the treasurer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks for reminding me, Linda, because that was that audit question we had. So we'll move to planning and zoning. I always skip over something. So update on planning and zoning work session.
Yeah, so planning and zoning did not meet their regular scheduled meeting. They had some forum issues, but then they did a work session on Friday. And the work session, what they're working on is the sign ordinance. So where are you going to put them? What they're going to look like? How big they can be? Can they be all through the residential, only in commercial? You know, all of those issues they're, they're discussing. So their minutes were pretty good. They, we all got them, so you know, kind of looked at that. But it's, it's basically that. And they have another work session scheduled for Thursday morning. A lot of it was simplified by saying, you know, it has to follow the dark sky ordinance. You can't have brightly lit ones, you can't have meows on, you know, you can have inside your shop lights. But anyway, so they are working through that and trying to get it to a spot that can be a draft ordinance to bring through a public hearing and then to present to the council to decide what to do. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that is. So any questions on any specifics or?
No, I think the only thing is, and I've talked about this with planning and zoning individually, is that we're on a tight schedule for hitting that moratorium of 90 days or three months. And we only have one more meeting, which is next Tuesday, before that moratorium ends. And so it would be really helpful to get a report from planning and zoning, just a quick email to me what the, the planning looks like, because I believe we still need a public hearing. So if some.
Maybe that's, you do need a public hearing. Well, Amanda's on later, so maybe follow up with her. She might be on now, actually.
Well, she's on for a whole other topic, so.
I mean, but I mean, she's present. If you wanted to ask her.
Yeah, thanks. I can follow up with her later on that, but that is a concern that I have. Any other questions for Lou? Okay. Then we've covered six with the local consent for bluff dwellings, which should help us with money, I'm hoping. Number seven, Amanda Podmore's request by Bluff's Planning and Zoning for Direction on Potential Ordinance for Large-Scale Dirt Moving. And Amanda, are you on?
I am, yeah, thank you. Can folks hear me okay? All right. Can you hear me or?
We can see you, but we can't hear you. Oh, I wonder, I may have, I had this off. Let's see if that helps. Amanda?
Yep, how about now?
Nope. Good to know.
Let's go to the here.
I'm not used to having two techies.
I'm not a techy, but.
Well, you at least knew where to find it on the screen.
Did you ask somebody else to try and see if it's Amanda's or if it's, I don't.
We heard a beep earlier and we were trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
There.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. I spoke quietly.
Hold on a second, Amanda, we're still trying to get me back in.
Okay.
Or on, or whatever. Okay, thank you. I would not have known how to do that. Amanda, go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much, Town Council, for allowing us to bring a question before you. And to Jen and Britt, welcome. It's really great to be working with you. Say that on behalf of the whole Planning and Zoning Commission. So we, the Planning and Zoning Commission tends to bring, bring up ideas for new ordinances or regulations in town based off of community or business needs that we hear. And last year it came to our attention that unlike what other towns across Utah like Moab might do, that Town of Bluff does not have any regulations around large-scale dirt moving. So we don't have, for example, any mechanisms for a, like a landowner to notify its neighbors to consider things like hydrological impacts or geological impacts for large-scale dirt moving. We don't require like anybody to come to planning and zoning before doing a lot of like pre-construction dirt moving. And so we began looking into this as something we should consider potentially adding requirements around in town. So whether that be permit requirements, notification requirements, there's a lot of options there. But as we started looking into drafting an ordinance around that, we realized that we could really quickly get into something that became, that had a lot of like highly technical review components. Dirt moving can quickly turn into like geological hazard discussions, and we don't know if that's something the Town of Bluff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have the capacity and money to really be monitoring and regulate, regulating right now. So our question to you, knowing that there have, there have been questions about like dirt moving happening in town and regulating that, and knowing that planning and zoning would draft, could potentially draft an ordinance and bring that to you for approval after a public hearing, we're curious your thoughts on us taking up this activity of drafting any regulations around large-scale dirt moving? And if so, maybe what, what scope should we be looking at? Something smaller, like just notifying, you know, land, like neighbors? Or do you want us to look into more like kind of technical geo-hazard related questions? There are definitely models out there at, at both scales, but we just love your kind of thoughts and feedback on that before we put a lot of work into it.
Questions from the council for Amanda or thoughts?
I'm a little apprehensive with the notifying of neighbors necessarily because I think that it could be very technical. And I think, I think that the neighbors don't necessarily understand all of the technicalness about it. I would question what are the county's regulations on, on this type of stuff to begin with? I think, I think to avoid a lot of, I hate to say tattletaling, but tattletaling, you know, I mean, there's, there's dirt moving and then there's dirt moving. And sometimes if you're just notifying your neighbor, for example, I, I bring a lot of dirt in for our husband's business and we're not necessarily moving it, but if all of our neighbors all of a sudden see big mountains of dirt on a piece of property, then are they going to immediately start running to, oh, you know, they're, they're, they're doing that sort of thing? So I don't, I don't know how to address that necessarily, but, but I do think it's important to preserve the safety of the ground and things like that to keep hazards from happening to other people's property and your own property for that matter. But there are building codes, I think already in existence, that might address those type of situations.
So the timing of this is kind of interesting because as some of us are aware, Kristen Bushnell was hired by San Juan County to do planning and zoning things. And she just reached out this afternoon to ask for a meeting with Erin and myself about some changes in the planning department with the zoning permits and that type of thing. I don't know exactly what she needs, but what I do know is the conversation that she and I had was the typical, I hate to say the typical, but the typical San Juan County conversation, which is, hey, Anne, do you have an agreement with San Juan County to do A, B, or C? Because I just took over the department and I don't see it. No, we don't have it. We don't have one. And so I'm assuming that what she is looking for is some MOU, some type of inter-local agreement about how the planning and zoning process works. Because right now, and Amanda, you know this, I don't know this very well, but so you do the land use clearance and then it goes up to San Juan County and they issued the building permit and do the inspections. But we've never had a formal agreement on that because of many reasons, but we've always, we've had an agreement informally with the department. But it looks like Ms. Bushnell now is rightfully wanting to reduce this to writing. That's a long way of saying this is a good opportunity to be able to ask that question like what's in the building, building code process at San Juan County applies that we might not have because they have to follow our code, not theirs. And so we can definitely ask that. I don't know, Erin and I haven't had a chance to talk about the timing in the meeting, but it might be helpful, Amanda, if you're available too, that we set something with the three of us with Ms. Bushnell to be able to go through that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to join that.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts for us, knowing that that'll probably happen in the next week?
I would just think that it's not pertinent right at the moment to push that forward beyond everything else that we're working on. It didn't make it to the strategic planning, it didn't make it on the general plan. So I think if we can clear up some of the things we're working on and, and Karen, I think it's important that you talk with planning and zoning. That's, that's crucial. But as far as planning and zoning, working and hashing through a whole ordinance, I don't know if it's timely to do that right now.
I think that that's probably, you know, the other part of the discussion with planning and zoning is like, what are the priorities? But I think this is coming, like you said, it's to the forefront right now. I need to, to talk with Ms. Bushnell and find out what, what we're doing and how comprehensive that is. You know, it's, it was, I might just add, it was, I believe, covered in the tanked inter-local agreement three years ago, and we did have a process. So we're working under the handshake, which has worked fine. And, but I think she's looking to formalize things. So Amanda, can we get back with you tomorrow morning and just let you know timeframes?
Absolutely.
I have one more thought about it, is that it could be possible that most of that would be on the land use clearance application, I would think. Well, not necessarily like this, you do it ahead of time. I don't know.
Well, I think that there, you know, there are a couple considerations. So once we find out what San Juan County's looking for, and then we, then planning and zoning can talk, and it might be we need to bring in Chris McAnany to fine tune things if we have to do something right now. But let's talk about the priorities. Anything else on that? Anything from you, Amanda?
No, but, I mean, that sounds great to have that conversation and then figure out if, if that's a priority for 2024. We, I will just note that we are much further advanced on the sign regulations update and also ordinance regulating RVs. So those have actual drafts in the works, whereas this earth moving one, we're really just at square one, so we're totally fine waiting if, if there's other priorities. So thank you all for your input and support. I really appreciate it.
Well, thanks for all the work you're doing. Thank you. All right. Is there any other, other?
I guess on my other, I still need somebody on the active transportation plan. Jen showed up today, which was great, but we don't have a meeting next week, but then the next week we do. So just if we can make sure that's on the agenda, because I'd like to vote on that to put somebody on. I guess we could maybe do it without a vote. that to put somebody on. I guess we could maybe do it without a vote, but.
Did I miss that on getting it on the agenda? Because I didn't see it, but.
Yeah, that's okay. I could put a follow-up, so it'll go on the next one. Because, like I said, she came today and had expressed interest in it.
I am interested, but if it's something that Britt would like to, to take on, if that's something that you're able, it seems like meetings might kind of collide, like, like today, the meeting collided with what would have been a DRC meeting. So I think, you know, I, I am interested definitely in the trail and, and, but I'm, I'm willing to, to look at meetings in the, in the, you know, at a later time or whatever, to stay for myself, not when it's all live and happening.
Well, after Luanne brought it up, I looked at my schedule. My Tuesdays are actually pretty wide open here today. So.
Yeah, since I'm on the DRC, if you want to take active transportation, then that, that, that works for me.
So I'll just get it on for a vote, and everybody watch the agenda and make sure I actually get it there.
I added that and, and the planning and zoning up there, because they do have another work session. So whatever you want to do on the timing of the.
Excuse me.
Is it a work session or a special meeting?
It's a work session.
It is a work session.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other other? Then.
Balloon Festival. Yes, balloon festival is this weekend. So I, I can, I can update you all on that one. Our pilots will be right, and, and some of our sponsors, we do have some out of town sponsors coming in, a lot of local sponsors. Thanks to all of you for helping us with that. Pilots will be arriving Thursday evening. A few pilots will actually be coming in on Wednesday. We will do our paper balloon construction with the elementary school, which we do every year on Thursday afternoon. And then we have our welcome dinner, which is a private, private dinner at the Twin Rocks Thursday night. Friday morning, we will arrive at the community center at 7:30 in the morning and commence, commence the activities. So they will, pilots will hopefully, weather permitting, which is looking good for all days, with the possibility of Sunday maybe not so good. But we'll be meeting here at 7:30 on Friday and Saturday mornings, flying over Bluff and surrounding areas Friday, Saturday. The glow-in will be here at the community center on Saturday evening. There's an art show here at the community center all day Saturday. We have chili and ice cream fundraiser for Business Centers of Bluff Saturday night. Navajo Taco Dinner is Friday night at the elementary school with some kind of entertainment. It's been great in the past couple of years in the new building. And then Sunday, we will meet here at 7 o'clock in the morning to travel to Valley of the Gods, weather permitting, fly Valley of the Gods, and then we wrap things up after that.
That's something I wanted to talk to you about. The AmeriCorps team is on its way, driving in the dark, driving me crazy. But we need crews, because.
Probably so, yes. And especially if I can get them here Friday morning, because a lot of our balloon pilots will come just pilot and balloon on Thursday, because a lot of their crews still work on Friday. So Friday morning is definitely a great time to have volunteers show up and help out. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's an activity during, during my heart. I, I love ballooning. I don't ever want to fly a balloon, but I love to participate in our festival. I just think it's a great way to, to participate in a fun activity in winter. But yes, yes, AmeriCorps, we'd love to have them. Because I don't think we have any Design Built Bluff students this year. Usually they're coming in about this time, and I haven't heard any buzz about that. So.
So there was a, there's something going on, and I don't know what it is. But with Adrian leaving, Adrian Caesar leaving yestermorrow, and yestermorrow, changing some things, and things have kind of shifted and changed. And when I tried to get information about renting the Scarra House for community rebuilds out of Moab for a week to help us, they said they're not in a position to negotiate anything right now. So, but.
Yeah. The AmeriCorps, we would love to have the AmeriCorps team come on and join us. And I think that they would enjoy the weekend as well. It's a fun activity.
I think they will. I'm hosting the two AmeriCorps team members that won the raffle in Moab at Community Rebuilds. We're hosting them. So do I have a motion on an executive session? And I'd like to take like a five minute break to, to, somebody check on Chris?
I make a motion that we close this meeting and go into executive session to discuss imminent or pending litigation pursuant to the Utah code. And then we close that session and this meeting from the executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so we're gonna take a, I'm gonna log off on this, close down the recorder.
So it's 4:56.
Yep, 4:56. Let's come back at about 5 after.